I call the meeting of the Community and Public Safety Committee to order. It is Tuesday, June 24 at 2:30 PM. Rebecca, will you please call the roll?
Canal.
Here.
Maria.
Here.
Zimmerman. Smith. Novick.
Here. Christopher, will you please read the statement of conduct?
Welcome to the meeting of the Community and Public Safety Committee. To testify before this committee in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the committee agenda at www-portland.gov/council/agenda/community-and-public-safety-committee, or by calling 311. Information on engaging with the committee can be found at this link. Registration for virtual testimony closes one hour prior to the meeting. In-person testifiers must sign up before the agenda item is heard. If public testimony will be taken on an item, individuals may testify for three minutes unless the chair states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The chair preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or committee deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, the committee may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony should address the matter being considered. When testifying, state your name for the record. If you were lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. Virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the clerk calls your name. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Today, the committee will consider the appointments of Gabriela Pachia—I hope I'm pronouncing that right—and Deanne Salazar to the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing, often referred to as PSAP. We will receive an informational presentation on Portland's fireworks ban and enforcement thereof, and receive an informational presentation on Portland's status as a sanctuary city, taking a look into the relevant state laws, city code, and the Portland Police Bureau directive. I want to thank everyone in the audience for being here today and to those tuning in online. We appreciate your time and engagement. We do have a full agenda ahead of us, but before we dive in, I want to take a moment to speak about public testimony. As you may have noticed, we do not have public testimony for two agenda items today. That's in keeping with standard committee practice. Testimony is typically reserved for when a committee hears a resolution or ordinance or holds a public hearing. Today's meeting is focused on providing brief foundational presentations on the city's fireworks ban and Portland's and Oregon's sanctuary laws. Our aim is to ensure that committee members and the public alike have a clear understanding of the legal frameworks, local policies, and current practices before we move into any future discussions or actions. On the sanctuary city policy and ICE in general, this will not be the only discussion this committee has on this issue. We need to have more opportunities in the future for public testimony and to make sure the public's voice continues to be heard. We absolutely value community voices. Your input is vital, and we look forward to creating space for those conversations soon. Please keep reaching out to all your elected officials, ourselves included. Keep showing up and continue to show support for our most vulnerable community members. We need to keep hearing the community's voice on this issue. Rebecca, could you please read the first item?
Item one: Appoint Gabriela Pachia and Deanne Salazar to the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing for terms to expire June 26, 2027.
May proceed.
Good afternoon, councilors. My name is Dory Grabinski, and I'm the program manager for the Portland Committee on Community Engaged Policing, or PSAP. And we're here today to present two candidates selected by Mayor Wilson to join the committee. So I'll begin with a very brief overview of PSAP's origins and scope, as well as the process used to select these candidates. I know we have a very packed day, so for your reference, this is about four minutes long. After that, we'll hear directly from the candidates and answer any of your questions. And, next slide. All right. So in 2012, the city of Portland reached a settlement agreement with the Department of Justice over the Portland Police Bureau's unconstitutional use of force against individuals with actual or perceived mental illness. This agreement came about after years of community organizing following a string of officer-involved deaths of people in crisis. As one of the settlement remedies, PSAP was created to ensure community voice is a part of shaping public safety and policing in Portland, and an acknowledgement that their absence contributed to the conditions of unconstitutional policing. Having a community board be a part of compliance is unique in the national landscape of settlement agreements, and came about because of the organizing that led to the DOJ investigation. So I start with this history to emphasize that PSAP stands in a long continuum of community work towards police justice in Portland, and reflects a powerful commitment by the city to uphold the changes it pledged to make. And in present day, PSAP is working with the mayor's office to codify the program and ensure it remains a lasting remedy. Next slide. So here we have some text pulled from the PSAP plan, a settlement agreement amendment outlining the purpose of the committee. There's a heavy emphasis on cultivating trust, building relationships, and sharing information. Equally, there is emphasis on PPB's accountability to those community-driven efforts such as recommendations and participation in public forums. And, next slide. Again, pulled from the PSAP plan, here is a list of the committee's powers and duties. The main enforcement mechanism in terms of powers comes through PSAP recommendations. PSAP is authorized to issue formal recommendations to the mayor, chief of police, and police commissioner. They are required—oh, not police commissioner, sorry—they are required to issue a formal written response within 60 days, which is unique among city advisory bodies. Additionally, you will see other duties here related to PSAP's convening power. PSAP conducts its work in public meetings and hosts large-scale public forums and town halls. The committee is successful at convening a diverse array of presenters, both within the city and outside of it. The committee considers itself a clearinghouse of information when it comes to complex public safety topics. And, next slide. So you can see some of those topics and PSAP's work on them here, including recommendations around body-worn camera policy and public education around different components of the first responder system. And, next slide. PSAP is a committee of 13 members who serve two-year appointments. We have reserved seats for youth and give special consideration to those with lived experience of mental illness or addiction. And, next slide. So for this recruitment, we utilized a rolling application system, received about 40 applications. After doing conflict screenings and reviewing materials, staff in the mayor's office conducted two rounds of interviews, and Mayor Wilson then selected two candidates for consideration. Next slide. And those candidates are with me here today, and at this time, I will pass it to the candidates to introduce themselves, beginning with Deanne.
Thank you, Dory. So, city council, yes. I am Deanne Salazar. I currently serve on the Portland Children's Levy, Community Advisory Council, and a host of other roles. My background and work has been focused on applied equity through the past several years, and my family background is actually quite intertwined with policing, since my great-grandparents were undocumented farmworkers who came to Salt Lake City, Utah in the '30s, who later received citizenship, as well as my family having consistent issues with the police for decades, with me being the only member of my family to actually have—to have never been arrested for anything major or minor. So that really informs my perspective as someone who understands intergenerational trauma, as well as having a diverse amount of experience with the law enforcement system. In addition to that, I am very aware of the issues that Portland historically had regarding police enforcement against people—you know, and the disproportionate impact with people with mental illnesses. I myself have autism and ADHD, which, you know, disability, mental illness, how the police really perceive that or stuff like that is sort of interchangeable. And so I bring a diverse amount of experience working on stuff such as the Governor-Traut Foster Advisory Commission, where I've really advocated foster youth who are also disproportionately likely to receive—you know, to be on the receiving end of law enforcement and other stuff. And so I feel very qualified to be able to represent a wide variety of communities, to really push for fair and accountable policing, so that we can ensure that we live up to the ideals of impartial justice. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Gabby Pachia. I came into policy in 2010. My father was killed by Napa Police Department during a mental health crisis, and part of our settlement was that body cameras would be worn and that there would be crisis intervention training. Since then, in my education, I have a master's degree in public policy that focused on police accountability, police oversight, police reform, and also the response to homelessness in San Francisco and the state during COVID. I think that—I'm very excited to be part of PSAP. I think really just generally—I won't get too much into, like, my professional career, but I think one of my strengths is just community engagement. I want to know what the community thinks. I want to know what underrepresented, and I want to know what the community thinks, and I want to bring that to the decision-makers so it can be implemented in policy, and I think this is a great position to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilors, any questions for the nominees?
I just had a question about process.
Yeah.
Are we voting these through separately or together?
Oh, let's see. The plan is to vote them together, but we can always separate them if we want to.
Let's separate them.
What?
Let's separate them.
Okay. Then, let's see. Counselor Canal?
Yeah, thanks. I have three questions, two for the prospective appointees and one for staff. Thank you all for being here. It's great to have you here, and it's exciting to get a chance to talk about PSAP and learn more. I'll start with the appointees, and these are for both of you. So I was previously staff support for PSAP, and one of the things I've seen is that PSAP members are often more successful when they're collaborative with each other in terms of division of labor. Some people aren't always good at research on what the current policy is, but they may be good at talking to PPB, or looking at what the community activists are saying on something, or looking at other jurisdictions and saying, hey, I'm not the research person, but I am the person who can do this, so I trust your research, and I ask you to trust the thing that I'm good at and our sort of specialization, however that works between the 13 of you. Is that something that you each feel comfortable doing with your colleagues, if appointed?
Yeah, I feel very comfortable in both roles, both doing research and working collaboratively. I'm looking forward to seeing where I'm most needed on the committee.
Yes, I feel comfortable doing that. That's how I functioned as a team player in various roles and functions, so I foresee no problem with that.
Great. And then, the other question I had for you both is, one of the traps, I think, that often gets fallen into by advisory groups is viewing themselves as the community, as opposed to representatives of the community and frankly conduits to the community, and I think the way that Dory laid that out in the presentation is uniquely successful for PSAP, and I'm kind of hoping it stays that way. So can you commit to not viewing the 13 members alone as the community, but to being a conduit to people like yourselves that you represent, but also people that you just know? Bring people in.
Yes, 100%. That's something that I myself always try to keep in mind. So I think that, in particular, will remain strength for the committee as long as I am on there.
Absolutely. That's part of the main reasons why I wanted to be part of the committee.
Thanks. And then I have two questions for the staff. First one, you don't have to answer now, but I'd love to know if after the budget adoption, if you have what you need to run the committee in the way that would comply with the four paragraphs of the settlement agreement that specifically referenced at the PSAP plan and everything else. And feel free to say—you'll need to get back to me on it, but yeah.
As Counselor Canal is aware, we have been requesting support for community engagement for many years, and this budget cycle, we were finally successful in meeting that compliance measure as mandated by the settlement agreement, and that support for this body. So we were very happy to see that come through. And, yeah, yeah. So at the moment, we feel well-resourced to do this work.
Thanks. And then, if someone wanted to learn more about PSAP who may be here for another purpose, you have a meeting tomorrow. Do you want to give a pitch for it? Or for PSAP?
Yes, so, yes, thank you for asking that. So we—PSAP works on a broad range of issues related to—of community concern related to policing and public safety. We meet most Wednesday nights via Zoom, sometimes hybrid, at 6:00 PM. The best way—I would just recommend Googling "PCCEP Portland," and that'll come up, but we are—we have a city webpage, and we have social media. Tomorrow night, we will be reviewing a recommendation related to the Portland Police Bureau's Directive on Exculpatory Evidence, which has significant impacts on how the justice system works for people who are accused of crimes. So, yeah, that's happening tomorrow night at 6:00 PM via Zoom.
Thanks. And I'll just note—I see other PSAP members here, co-chair as well, so thank you all for being here. I think the technical process is that we need a motion to refer the report, and then potentially a motion to—a request to divide that motion, so I will make the motion to refer the report to the full council with a "do-pass" recommendation, and then obviously we can have more discussion.
The report is for both? I think—I thought—because the way it was presented to me is we're just voting on the—
My understanding is technically you move it together, and then somebody would request to divide it, but I'm not sure. Can you speak to that?
You could vote on each one individually.
Yeah, so that—I'm going to make the motion together and ask if a councillor—if a colleague would like to divide it, that's of course okay.
I request to divide it.
Very well.
And I'll go in the order that it says on the—so I—I'm Mr. Pachia first, Mr. Salazar second.
So, do we have a motion to move the appointment of Mr. Salazar to the Committee on Community Engaged Policing to be sent to the full council with the recommendation that the appointment be confirmed?
Yes, if you want to.
So, sure. Do you have a second? Okay, I'll second that. Can the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, so this is a motion to move Salazar—
Yes.
—to full council with recommendation.
I should ask, do we have any discussion? Okay, then call the—call the roll.
Canal.
Thank you to the staff for putting together a list of folks that have not only the specific needs that are enumerated in the PSAP plan and the settlement agreement in terms of what we need, but also help balance the existing members as well. I vote aye.
Maria.
I appreciate all the work that people put into getting this committee together. Unfortunately, I have met Deanne outside of these spaces, and I have known and seen him to perpetuate misinformation for political gain and ignore the voices of people with lived experience. And given that pattern, I don't think that he would be a good person to have on this committee, given the delicate nature of the work that is ahead. So I vote no.
Apologies, Chair. There is someone signed up for public testimony for this item.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Oh, we should have done that first. Can the testifier come up? Or is it something—or are they here virtually?
We have one person signed up. The testifier is Joe Rao.
Okay.
Joe Rao.
Can Joe Rao approach?
He might be in one of the overflow rooms.
Looks like they are not here.
Counselor Canal observes that Mr. Rao might be in an overflow room, but we don't really—
I've been told we got people in both Petty Grove and Lovejoy right now.
We can give them a moment. Here, Joe Rao, for testimony. You can come to main chambers if you're in the overflow room.
Do you want to call the second person in the—oh, there's only one?
Joe Rao is on his way.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Joe Rao. I'm a resident of North Portland, District 2, and I'm here to address the new commission for police accountability. And also, I am concerned about the bias clause that still remains, allowing anybody to kick anybody off of this for an allegation of bias. I was abused by the police when I arrived in Portland in 2004. I've submitted all my testimony online as PDFs and pictures, and this city is extremely unaccountable to the police department, as evidenced by the millions of dollars in police overtime—21 million just for the most recent report—and for the hundreds of millions for payouts when police abused people like me who are protesting. I was just shot in the legs, standing where the ICE staff told me to, as far away from the ICE building as possible. And while I was being shot by ICE cops illegally with my constitutional right to stand on the sidewalk, Portland police were nearby protecting them by hanging out day after day in the business parking lots behind the ICE building, so—
Mr. Rao, could you limit your testimony to the nominees before us?
Yes. I am encouraging them, and you, in my written testimony, to write a city resolution affirming the rights of people to protest. We still do not have that right exercisable in Portland, as evidenced by my injuries to my leg and in the PDFs of my court case, which went through the Oregon Court of Appeals, where I won in 2006 after two years of a legal battle against police abuse. So I encourage the commission—congratulations to all of you for being on there. I didn't even apply because I'm too busy in my life with my child. So thank you, and I close my testimony.
Thank you. And nobody else has signed up?
That concludes testimony.
Okay. Since I jumped the gun and called for a vote before we heard testimony, I think that probably technically we should have a revote on the nomination of Mr. Salazar. So, Rebecca, you think that's correct? Okay. So, I ask for a motion.
So moved.
Okay. And I offer a second. Rebecca, can you call the roll?
Canal.
Yes.
Maria.
No.
Novick.
Yes. And I ask for a motion to move the appointment of Gabriela Pachia.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Rebecca, can you call the roll?
Canal.
So this doesn't officially appoint you. We're still going to have to do it in a full council meeting, but I appreciate both of your willingnesses to serve on this committee, and I vote aye.
Maria. I just want to thank you so much for sharing your experience, and I think that it's going to be really valuable for this committee, so I vote aye. Thank you.
Novick.
I want to thank all 40 people who applied to the staff for going through the applications, and to both of you here today, really appreciate your willingness to serve. The motion carries the appointment of Gabriela Pachia and Deanne Salazar to the Committee on Community Engaged Policing, moved to full council with the recommendation that the appointments be confirmed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rebecca, can you please read the next item? Rebecca, can you please read the next item?
Item two, informational presentation on fireworks ban and enforcement.
Thank you. This is an issue of some personal significance to me. I and my dog spend 12 incredibly miserable hours a year due to people violating the fireworks ban. My dog's reaction to fireworks is to try to tear a hole in the wall in order to somehow escape it. So I have to literally hold onto him for six hours on the Fourth of July and six hours on New Year's Eve, because people in my neighborhood start setting off fireworks at about 7:30 and don't stop until about 1:30 AM. I know that fireworks have a similar impact on many pets around the city. Fireworks are also a trigger for PTSD for maybe individuals who have had to deal with explosions in unfortunate circumstances. Today, we're going to hear some information on the impact of fireworks on pets and people from three three folks. Dr. Stephen Coches, I'm sorry, I've been misspelling your name, and of the Oregon Humane Society, Chief Medical Officer and Interim CEO, Dr. Jonathan Betlinsky of Oregon Health and Science University, and Debbie Castleton of the City Veterans Empowerment Team, to talk about the impact on people. So I'd ask them to begin their begin their testimony in that order. Dr. Coches. Let's see. Well, let's see. We're trying to wait to see if we can find Dr. Coches. Can we hear from Dr. Betlinsky?
Certainly. Co-chairs Canal and Novick, Councilor Maria, thank you for the opportunity to speak before the Community and Public Safety Committee today. For the record, my name is Dr. Jonathan Betlinsky. I'm a psychiatrist, and among other roles, I get to be the George Sasso Professor of Psychiatry at OHSU. And I live right here in Portland, Oregon, as well. I'm here today to raise awareness about an important issue, that of navigating Independence Day when one has post-traumatic stress disorder, or PTSD. We have a long tradition in this country of celebrating Independence Day with fireworks. And however fun that may be, it can also present challenges for those living with post-traumatic stress disorder. For those not familiar, PTSD is a condition that commonly includes intense distress at reminders of one's past traumas, efforts to avoid those reminders, hypervigilance, and an exaggerated startle response, among other symptoms. As the National Center for PTSD reminds us, fireworks are loud, with bright flashes of light, creating smoke and burning smells. There are often crowds gathered to watch displays, and loud music may be typical. Any of these sounds, sights, or smells may serve as trauma reminders. For veterans, fireworks may cue memories of combat or explosions. For others, fireworks may be reminders of intense fires or gun violence. Rather than the short term fix of simply avoiding fireworks, here are some of the things the National Center for PTSD says you can do to take care of yourself if fireworks scare or otherwise bother you. As often as you need to, remind yourself that however similar fireworks might be to a past event, they are not a current threat to you. Learn as much as you can about an event before you go, so you can know whether fireworks will be involved and the timing of them. Talk with someone close to you about your concerns and invite them along. Consider bringing earplugs or headphones to lessen the noise. And most importantly, if you find that fireworks or other trauma reminders are very distressing and hard to manage, remember treatment can help. For the rest of us celebrating Independence Day, here are some of the tips the National Center for PTSD offers for how to support those who live with PTSD. Consider the meaning and value of using fireworks versus other alternatives, like sparklers or light shows, and consider centering activities around themes other than loud fireworks. Avoid setting off fireworks at unexpected times. Instead, notify guests ahead of time if fireworks will be a part of your celebration, and set a specific time, or at least announce the start of fireworks, so guests can plan for their own needs. And finally, show compassion. You can choose the celebration you want, and at the same time, you can respect the decisions of others that they need to make for self-care. In summary, whether or not fireworks are expected, they can cause distress for those who have experienced combat or have gone through a fire, explosion, or gun violence. For Independence Day this year, I ask all of us to infuse our national pride with thoughtfulness for anyone, and especially veterans, living with PTSD. Thank you for your time and attention. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
Debbie is online.
Hi, Debbie. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Debbie Castleton, and I'm here to speak on behalf of veterans, especially those living with the invisible wounds of war. But I'm mostly here as the daughter of a veteran who struggled deeply with the impact of fireworks in our neighborhoods. My father was a Vietnam War veteran. He served two tours in the Marines and came home with three Purple Hearts and a Bronze Star. He was proud of his service, but he carried a lot of pain with him. Like many combat veterans, he lived with post-traumatic stress. Every year around the Fourth of July, our family prepared for the worst. The loud, unexpected explosions of fireworks would send him into a panic. He would duck, flinch, and sometimes disappear into a closet or crawl space to feel safe. He couldn't sleep. Sometimes he would lash out, not knowing where he was. He he couldn't tell if he was still in a war zone or back home. As a small child, I didn't understand what was happening. I just knew that the fireworks made my dad act in ways that were scary and very unpredictable. I was frightened and confused. I didn't feel safe either. And these memories have stayed with me. And we're not alone. The U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs estimates that about 11 to 20% of veterans who served in Iraq and Afghanistan experience PTSD each year. And for Vietnam veterans, that number is closer to 30% over their lifetimes. These are people who live in our communities, people like my dad. When we set off fireworks in neighborhoods without warning or regulation, we are forcing veterans to relive trauma they've spent years trying to heal from. With what some see as a celebration feels like combat to others. And because these fireworks often happen unpredictably for days or even weeks, the stress isn't just on one holiday. It stretches stretches across the summer. This isn't about taking away celebration. It's about being thoughtful. Professional fireworks shows that are scheduled in brief or light-based alternatives that don't rely on explosions are ways we can include everyone in honoring our country's history. My father passed away years ago from complications from his service in his time in the Marines, but I believe he'd be proud to know I'm here today. Speaking up for him and for those for all of those who still feel the effects of war every time they hear a boom in the sky or in your neighborhood, please consider how we can protect and support our veterans, especially the ones who continue to carry the cost of service long after the battle ends. And I'd like to also note that the effects that it has on my rescue dog have to sedate for weeks. And the sedation doesn't work and makes him sick. And he's just terrified and hides in a closet. And it brings back that post that PTSD from my childhood as well, witnessing my dad, not to compare my dad to a dog, but you know, I think you understand what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I think we have Dr. Coches here now. Apologize for mangling your name.
That's okay. It's close enough. Dr. Steve Coches, thank you for having me speak today. I'm the Chief Medical Officer and the Interim CEO from the Oregon Humane Society. I've been a veterinarian practicing in the Portland metro area for almost 25 years. I've been a practicing vet for almost 30 years. This is a, as our previous witness alluded to, this is a very stressful time of year for the veterinary community, but not just for veterinarians, but for the pets and the people that we serve. There are tens of thousands of pets in this community and pet owners, probably or possibly more, that this has a huge impact on. In my veterinary experience, I can't tell you how many times, especially for the number of years that I served as an emergency veterinarian in this community, the number of pets that are coming in injured, either due to harm that they've caused themselves out of stress or anxiety and fear in the home or in the process of trying to get away from the sound, the noise, the vibration, and the stress of the fireworks. And it's not just the day of, especially when this holiday occurs over a weekend. It's usually the entire weekend, the days leading up and the days after. For shelters, which is what I'm also representing here today, a lot of the shelters in the air are already overwhelmed, trying to deal with pets that we are trying to find homes for. That is magnified when we have pets that are trying to escape from a home where they are terrified. It's just really if their parents or their owners are not home. There's an uptick in strays that are brought into municipal shelters and humane societies like ourselves. The return rate for pets that end up in a shelter is less than 30% for dogs and less than 5% for cats, that they get reunited, especially if they don't have ID or microchip. That is even less. Shelters are already, a lot of them are at capacity. And Oregon Humane Society is trying to help as much as we can in the community, but this puts an unnecessary strain on our animal welfare community. From a public safety perspective, think about a terrified dog running through the neighborhood, trying to get away. And there's really no escape for them from the sound, the noise, the light. All of it is terrifying for them. Increased risk of being hit by a car or causing an accident is someone trying to avoid hitting a cat or dog that's running from this fear. And it's there's an unpredictability to this. So for some pets, this means that they're in a sedated state for days or weeks around the Fourth of July, because you just never know when somebody's going to have that barbecue or that party. For pets that have other clinical diseases that would prevent them from being appropriately sedated, this adds a whole another level of complication. And the sedation doesn't eliminate the fear, it's just keeping them sedate. They're still feeling stressed, they're still feeling fear, and they're still very anxious. All we're trying to do is to keep them from causing harm to themselves or anyone around them. I would encourage anyone to consider or give it a second thought before buying that very colorful, somewhat pretty package for fireworks, and consider something an alternative, something that's going to be less harmful to the environment, for the people, for the pets, and for the community.
Thank you very much. Counselor Maria.
Thank you. Are we moving to discussion now?
I thought that maybe we'd have questions for any of the testifiers.
I don't have questions. I guess I just want to name something while we're having this presentation. First of all, thank you all so much for coming here today and for the information that you've provided. And I want to acknowledge that while we're having this conversation about how this impacts pets and how this impacts veterans, there's also a bunch of people here who have been protesting for a while. And as someone who protested a lot in 2020, I remember the direct impacts psychologically, physically, of protesting, and the flashbangs, and the rubber bullets, and the tear gas, and everything else, and how that triggers your PTSD, too. So I want to acknowledge that while we're having that conversation, we're sitting in a room full of people who might be experiencing those things as well right now. I also had a general, maybe council operations question. I've been told that our overflow rooms for testimony for maybe the, or I guess there's no testimony for the next item, but our overflow rooms are full, and people are waiting outside to get into the building. Is it possible to open any rooms in the Portland building to get more people access to be able to watch?
Let me get your applause to jazz hands or blues hands or other, you know, non-noisy communication. Thank you very much.
The Portland Building overflow has been requested to be set up, and staff are in process right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now going to, I mean, fireworks are illegal in the city of Portland, but compliance is, to put it mildly, spotty. We're now going to hear from the Fire Marshal, from PPB, and from Boeck on how the fireworks ban works, what we can do and can't do in terms of enforcement, what we are able to do in terms of public education. So please proceed.
Good afternoon. I'm Steve Maudslay, Interim Director of the Bureau of Emergency Communications. Our bureau is often the starting place for many public safety responses. And we wanted to introduce this section by briefly talking about the impacts of fireworks. July 4th is one of our busiest, busier days of the year, where our hourly call count nearly doubles, especially after 9:00 PM, due to increased reports about fireworks. These extra calls hinder our ability to quickly answer emergency calls, because so many of those calls come in within a few hours, instead of being spread out across 12 or 24 hour periods, like some other events we experience throughout the year. Last week, our 911 call volume averaged between 1,700 and 1,800 calls per day. Since 2020, we received an average of 2,300 call 911 calls on July 4th. This increased call volume and the hundreds of calls to the non-emergency line regarding fireworks and other things makes it hard to keep up and ensure the community receives the service they deserve on that day. As you know, our team has made a lot of progress towards reducing 911 wait time, and we're currently averaging 24 seconds this year. We want everyone to know, 911 is for emergencies, when there is a threat to life or property. If the complaint is only about noisy or illegal fireworks, those are not emergencies. We need the community's help to keep 911 available for people who need us. With a firework ban in place, we wanted to provide you with context surrounding some impacts to 911. Now I'll hand off to the Fire Marshal.
Thank you. Good afternoon, councilors. I'm Carrie Schimmel, Fire Marshal. The purpose of the fireworks ban is because of our drought conditions and elevated summer temperatures, cause imminent risk of fires starting within the city and throughout the region. Use of fireworks causes an increased demand for emergency services, like we just heard. Fireworks are associated with a heightened risk of death, injury, and property damage. And again, what we've already heard, there is a known negative impact on veterans and pets. Next slide, we are demonstrating the increase in our call volume. So this is a compact slide here, our chart. It's over the last six years, the first eight days of July, so July 1st through July 8th of the last six years. And it shows the increase of our call volume. So you'll see on the 4th and the 5th, it's our call volume increases quite a bit for fireworks-related incidents. The next slide, we just focused on July of 2024. So again, this is the first eight days of July of last year, and it just shows the fire-related calls compared to all the other calls that Portland Fire and Rescue is responding to. So again, you'll see on the 4th, 5th, and actually all the way through the 8th, that increase in calls, but especially for fires on the 4th and 5th. And a lot of questions come up about our authority and fireworks accountability. So Title 31 is that gives us, as Portland Fire and Rescue, the authority to cite per firework for firework possession or use. The city of Portland initially banned the sales and use of fireworks from June 30th to July 14th in 2021. That was under emergency ordinance under Mayor Wheeler at the time. And that prepared us to get the work together and do a complete fireworks ban that was adopted by City Council in March of 2022. We upstaff our investigations unit during this time. We also upstaff our, what we call our brush units, that are able to respond to the forested areas. But with our investigators, our Portland Fire Investigations Unit investigates all fires that have a connection to fireworks. So if your firework use is found as a cause, you will be held responsible. Fireworks use that causes injury or extensive damage can result in heavy fines and/or jail time. So some of the challenges that come up every year and are questioned. There's definitely a safety concern. We have a hard time getting our inspectors and other employees to step up because of that concern. And so we do partner with PPB in the past. That does become a challenge because of the staffing and the capacity of who we have available on a holiday and work in those, you know, usually from 8:00 to 2:00 in the morning. And again, this would be a volunteer basis. We don't, there's not mandatory for staffing, and this is very specific to patrolling the city for fireworks. And also, the budget constraints. This is, in the past, it's been overtime. We spend a lot of time on our campaign and outreach. And then, once the citation is issued, citizens have the option of administrative issued, citizens have the option of administrative appeals, and that just also takes quite some time to put together that board to review those citations, and usually that results in a reduction in citation and/or a complete wave. Inconsistent regulations with regional partners. You see this with, we have a complete ban here in Portland. It makes it a little more difficult with our neighboring jurisdictions that have different regulations. So we do try to partner with our surrounding jurisdictions as much as possible to be as consistent as we can. But those are usually the challenges that we face every year. And I'll pass it on to Chief Day.
Thank you. Ladies and Counsel, Bob Day, Chief of Police, City of Portland. Just want to thank the public testimony. It was just a good reminder, really compelling reference, and P P B is continuing to educate and will be doing so over the course of next week, what we can legally enforce. I intend to incorporate some of the testimony we heard today as a reminder for our members of the significance of it. And officers will be directed that when they encounter violations of fireworks, to be able to seize those and issue citations if necessary. Typically, the ability to seize them is adequate. That'll obviously be within the course of their regular duties, but we will be making an intentional effort over the next week to educate our members, to explain to them the expectation for the holiday, and as well as sharing some of the information we've learned from the public testimony today. Steve?
Thank you. So as mentioned earlier, and as we wrap up, it's vital to keep 911 free for emergencies. So concerned about system-wide impacts from fireworks from the Fourth of July and the days surrounding, Public Safety Service Area is working with 311 on a website for community members to report fireworks, and looking forward to launch in the coming days. The draft intake screen is what you see on your monitors right now. So we're excited about it, and we expect it to make a difference. As noisy illegal fireworks calls are directed away from 911, doing so will free up emergency lines, and collected information will help responders identify hotspot areas where fireworks are being used, which could inform future public education efforts. For this to work, though, we need the community's support. When it's ready, we encourage all community members to use the fireworks reporting link visible on the screen there, and we'll go ahead and message that out, and that'll help keep us nine, keep 911 lines free for emergencies. Counselors, that's the end of our presentation.
Thank you. Any questions, fellow councilors? I've got a couple. What is the fine for using fireworks in the city of Portland?
And our fee schedule is up to $1,000.
Up to?
What's that?
How much?
A thousand?
A thousand? Up to a thousand? Last year, last Fourth of July, was anybody actually assessed a $1,000 fine?
Not by Portland Fire.
How about by Portland Police?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I have to say that, I mean, how often did you seize fireworks?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. We have done different efforts over the years, but I don't have that. I can certainly ask and see if we seized any last year or not.
I have to say, I mean, I understand that doing wide-scale enforcement would be difficult, but it is done in other cities. I met with the Deputy Fire Chief from Dallas a couple of weeks ago, and she said that they send out drones on the Fourth of July, and when they find violations, they assess people for violations. And I think that I have a situation where people know that there is no enforcement whatsoever is problematic. Even if you could fine five people a year and let people know that that's happening, then that might have some sort of effect, I'd like to think. I just don't like the idea of a law for which there's no enforcement whatsoever. I do hope, I mean, I think that public education can be useful. I know that there are some people out there who don't realize when they're set off fireworks that they are guilty of animal abuse and of abusive behavior towards people who are triggered by explosions. So public education is important, but I would like to see some effort at some level of enforcement, even understanding that you can't, you know, cite thousands of people a year. Do you think that might be possible?
Yes, P P B would definitely be communicating that to the members that are working on that during that timeframe.
Thank you. And could you make sure that, you know, keep track of the citations and, so we can let people know that it actually does happen?
Yes, we'll keep track of any of those seizures that happen, and then I'll also get you the numbers for 24, if they exist, or what they, where they're at.
Okay. Thank you very much. I really realize this is difficult, really appreciate your work, and take to heart that, you know, the idea that we should not be calling 911 despite the fact that I personally think that's an emergency, that my dog and I are terrorized for 12 hours a year, but I know that's not something to call animal raw about. Oh, Counselor Canall.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Novick. Thank you to Counselor Mario for pointing out that it's not just veterans and pets, but many people can have PTSD, obviously people who experience gun violence, protesters, first responders, and more. Thanks to our presenters, Dr. Kottas, Dr. Betlinsky, Debbie Castleton. Also, thank you to Debbie for your work on deep and the other, the ERGs as well. I appreciate this coming out, because, or coming up, because this is a life safety risk as it relates to fire. And I want to thank Fire Marshal Schimmel, Chief Day, and Interim Director Maudslay for being here. Congrats on the new role, Interim Director Maudslay, and also thank you for bringing up the impacts on other callers who might be calling about something else that gets delayed, and also on 911 staff, our first first responders. I do think this, this brings to light two other things that maybe not directly in the scope of this conversation, but are related. One is the importance of resolving our non-emergency structure, so that there's ideally a single place. I mean, you may have heard that the conversation on 311 has, and the non-emergency line is one thing. I think the best example of why 311 is easy is actually the beginning of this meeting, where we read that ridiculously long URL for the website for this committee, or just call 311, and, and really, no one's going to remember spelling that all out. So I do want to talk about that and the 24/7 aspect of eventually getting to 24/7 for 311, so that we can have a place for those to go that isn't burdening the 911 center and, and the staff there, because there are other staff at 311. The other thing is, I would strongly oppose the use of drones as it relates to the fireworks enforcement, but I do want to agree narrowly with the part about human first responder activity on that and just co-sign that part of it. So, thank you.
Counselor Mario.
Yeah, strongly oppose expanding the surveillance state to police fireworks. I think that's a bad idea. I also just feel, I don't want to yuck anyone's yum, but we have literally, all of our overflow rooms are full, people are spilling out outside of our city council halls, the Portland building is full. I think that people want to hear about the immigration issues, which are extremely prescient at this time.
Well, the presentations are concluded, and thank you very, very much for being here, both the, both staff and outside testifiers, and look forward to working with you on this issue on the Fourth of July and in the future. Rebecca, could you please read the next item?
Item three, informational presentation on sanctuary city status.
Would you introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair Novick. So we know that Portland's sanctuary city status and Immigrations and Customs Enforcement actions are top of mind for many people in this room, many people in the overflow rooms in the city and around the country. We believe that a starting point for this conversation is clearly understanding our sanctuary laws, policies, and directives, including an understanding of where these may need to be clarified or frankly strengthened. And so putting this item on the agenda was a way to start that conversation. As Counselor Novick put it, this will not be the, the last conversation, it's merely the first on this topic. As we have, as many of you know, we, this committee doesn't have enough time, too few meetings, and they're often too short. As a result, we were unable to have a public testimony on this. That's something that we're not supportive of as a general practice, but it is something that we had to do today. It was either that or wait till July to have this conversation start at all, which we thought was a worse option. So having this get started and then trying to work with colleagues to schedule some type of listening session for around July 7th, leading into our committee meeting on July 8th, we also have committee meetings on July 15th and 22nd. That's really where this is going to be something that, that continues on. As I mentioned, it's not the first, or sorry, not the last conversation. We know many of you are here to make your voices heard on this issue. We're glad you're here. We need you, we need people everywhere to keep speaking out on this issue and to keep telling your elected officials what you want, what you expect. We also, I also wanted to note that there's a conversation going around, around the permit for the facility on McAdam. There is a conversation to be had there. If you haven't read the recent Portland Mercury article, I think it lays out a lot of the various arguments, so I won't rehash them. Here, the permit issue is not entirely within this committee's jurisdiction, so it's not part of today's conversation explicitly. It could be a topic for the Climate and Land Use Committee or Transportation and Infrastructure to, to explore next, it's just how we're structured. And lastly, we know the one hour that we have for this is probably going to be insufficient, but we want to make sure that this is starting now, because as I mentioned, we don't have another committee meeting for two weeks, and we wanted to make sure this conversation began before whatever the events of the next two weeks are. Lastly, I'll just ask that the degree to which we are able to have this conversation progress is related to the degree to which this conversation can go smoothly. So I'll ask that you allow us, for, for us, to ensure that we're able to get this information out to the public, including those who are here in person in this room or outside, but also to express your, your views in a way that allows us to proceed and have this conversation another time. We are as much having the federal imposition occur to us in city government, and we're trying to find the best way to respond to it. So I appreciate everyone being here, I appreciate Counselor Novick working to help get this on the agenda and letting me give a comment upfront, and I'm looking forward to hearing and asking some questions as well for our presenters. I'll let you, do you want to introduce?
Yes, I think that our first speaker is Chief Deputy City Attorney Heidi Brown, to talk both about the state law and the city policy. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you, the councilors. Good afternoon. My name is Heidi Brown, Chief Deputy City Attorney, and I'm going to go over briefly our Oregon state law related to sanctuary, and then our city policy. And then I thought it might be helpful if you just, if I just give you a brief update on the two lawsuits that the city is a party to related to our sanctuary status. So this first slide, I just wanted folks to know that, that the state of Oregon has been a sanctuary state since 1987, so quite a long time now. That law, the current law prohibits any government entity in Oregon, an Oregon government entity, from using equipment, money, or personnel to detect or arrest people in order to enforce federal immigration laws. So it's state law, and then there's a couple of exceptions where law enforcement may arrest a person who's charged with a criminal violation of federal immigration laws and has a warrant for the crime issued by a federal judge. So just to be very clear, it's not an administrative warrant, which some people know about, would be a warrant issued by an agency, rather, it needs to be issued by a federal judge. And, and then law enforcement may exchange information with federal immigration authorities to request criminal investigation information. So it's a limitation on that. If we can go to the next slide, please? Thank you. And then, there's, there's a handful of different sanctuary laws, but these are the two that I think are relevant to our discussion today, and this is the other one, which is the prohibition for public bodies related to immigration enforcement. And so, public entities such as the city of Portland cannot deny services, benefits, privileges, or opportunities based on somebody's immigration status. We also do not inquire into or collect information about a person's immigration status except in limited circumstances where it's required regarding a state or local law violation. And there may be some eligibility for a benefit a person is seeking. There are certain visas that people can obtain when they're working with law enforcement on something and they're an undocumented immigrant, and so they may, they may seek that benefit and provide information related to that, or if it's submitted to a court, related to a court proceeding. And then, just to be clear, public bodies can't provide information about a person in custody to a federal immigration authority for civil immigration enforcement purposes. Again, unless it's required by a subpoena, sorry, unless it's required by a subpoena or it's, or it's information that's readily available to the public and it's already out there. So this is, those, that's a very brief overview of state law. In 2017, after the first Trump administration, the city adopted its sanctuary policy. If we can go to the next slide, please? Thank you so much. So that was in a city resolution where the city acknowledged us as a welcoming city to all people. And I will note that, that the start of the resolution and the resolve that occurred in there talks about welcoming everybody, immigrants, but people based, not, we welcome folks national origin, race, color, gender, sexual identity, there's protected class statuses we recognize and welcome. And so, under this, but in, in relation to our sanctuary city status, we had resolved to continue to prohibit in a manner consistent with state and federal law, which we are required to follow, this use of city funds, personnel, and equipment to, to enforce federal immigration law. So we prohibited that. And then council also directed the Police Bureau to ensure that their directive, which Chief Day will discuss, provides that P P B personnel do not cooperate with ICE except as expressly provided by federal law. That's, I think, really the summary of our sanctuary city policy. And then I did want to tell you, though, about our two lawsuits that we're involved in right now. The first one we joined was with San Francisco. That was filed in February, and that was a challenge to the executive orders put out by Trump, the Trump administration, where they were limiting, they were ordering all federal agencies to refuse to provide federal funding to any sanctuary city, sanctuary jurisdiction is the term they use, so not just cities, but all jurisdictions that, that consider themselves sanctuary, and, and that they, they were, and if they, they were refusing to enforce civil immigration laws and cooperate and help with ICE, that there were a number of conditions put into that particular executive order from the Trump administration, and we were able, along with San Francisco and other jurisdictions, to get a preliminary injunction prohibiting the enforcement of those executive orders against Portland. And that remains in effect with Judge Orick down in San Francisco, and there was a recent discussion about whether some of the orders that had come out, excuse me, some of the enforcement efforts come out by the agencies within the federal government related to grants, of which the city receives several. And, and the judge held that the, his preliminary injunction did cover those agencies as well, and that they were prohibited from not providing funds to the city based on our sanctuary status. The second lawsuit that we joined is up in King County in Washington, and that was specific to grants from the Department of Transportation and Human and Health, Health, excuse me, Health and Human Services. And again, we have a preliminary injunction ordering the federal government to proceed and provide federal grants that we would be entitled to, and not to refuse to provide them based on our sanctuary status. So we are currently, as I noted, engaged in those two lawsuits to, to ensure that our sanctuary status is, is respected and recognized, and that we are not penalized as a city based on federal grants, as we're seeing happen nationwide. And then, if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them, but that's like, big picture, where we stand as a sanctuary city.
Any questions? I have one. You talked about our having to do things that federal law requires. Have there, have you seen instances where there's a debate about whether, what federal law requires?
I, I, well, I've certainly seen the federal government debate about what they are or are not required to do, or what we are. are not required to do, or what we are or are not required to do. There's their belief that we are required to help them enforce civil immigration laws and to detain people on administrative warrants as opposed to judicial warrants. So things of that nature, I think we disagree with the federal government on, and so far we prevailed in our court proceedings on those. Other than that, I don't, you know, those are the things that are highlighted right now because we are in litigation about them, and as I've noted, we've been successful. I think several jurisdictions have been successful in their lawsuits to date.
Thank you. Counselor Knoll?
Thank you for being here, Heidi, and I think you've been working on sanctuary city policy for, I think, eight-plus years here, so thank you for that as well. Could you clarify what cooperate means in the context of, it's on our screen, it's not up there, but Resolution 37277?
You, shall not cooperate, yes. So, well, it would be the kinds of things I was just talking about. So, holding somebody on an administrative detainer, so a warrant issued by an agency rather than by a federal judge, going out and arresting and taking people into custody based on a federal civil immigration matter. So those are the kinds of things that the resolution was focusing on, on the cooperation with ICE.
And it's not overly limiting in the sense that I know the chief, for example, talks to federal law enforcement on a regular basis, and the act of communicating is not a concern there, right?
Right, I mean, there's several things that the federal government does, there's criminal law violations that PBB would coordinate with them, human trafficking violations and things of that nature that they would work with them on, and that this did not prohibit. But, but as it relates to civil enforcement of federal immigration laws, that was really what we were focusing on, or what the council was focusing on in adopting this resolution.
Yeah, I, thank you for clarifying, I'm just asking because I think it's not always clear to everyone what is allowed and what's not, and also sanctuary maybe gives an impression that isn't necessarily always accurate, that just word and what we think of when we hear it, so I want to make sure we're, everyone's on the same page. Thanks.
And of course, PBB would always enforce state laws, so if there's state law violations, then just like any other community member, you know, they would respond to calls of especially serious criminal law violations.
Counselor Maria?
Thank you, Chair Novick, and thank you for being here to answer our questions. I think there's two outstanding questions that I have and that the community has, and also I've been told by attorneys that these things have to be answered in a case-by-case basis because the law is complicated, and I think we frustrate attorneys when we ask broad questions, so I'm trying not to do that to you. But I think overall, a question that I've seen come from community is, can you sort of outline, knowing that there are nuances in varied situations, of when our police interact with ICE and how, so that the community can have some clarity around what counts as cooperation under the law and what our police are legally required to continue to do? And, well, maybe I'll let you answer that question first, but my second big question, so you can start thinking about it, is there is a moral debate happening right now about revoking the permit for the ICE detention, or the ICE facility, but there's also a legal question about what does it actually take to revoke a permit, because we can't just do it because it feels morally good, sometimes there are legal requirements for that, and I'm curious if you could outline that for all of us as well.
I can, I will discuss PBB interacting with ICE and how, and then also let the chief talk about, too, the ways in which they would interact with them, because I think it's, he would be able to better answer ways that they would interact, because I think I can answer better what, where they won't interact with them, which would be if there was a call, for example, for PBB to come and arrest somebody because there's a warrant issued by the agency, by ICE, to hold somebody based on a federal civil immigration hold. So they would not do that. They would not keep somebody, hold them in their holding facility at PBB. Of course, the city doesn't own the jails or holding facilities, but those are the county. But, but they also will not hold somebody solely based on that federal immigration detainer that is not a criminal matter, and again, a warrant issued by a federal judge. So it's more around the things that they will not do. If there are, and then just to get into a couple of things they might do, for example, if there were, if there were an ICE van and somebody were to ram into it intentionally and cause, you know, and bash on the windows and try to injure people, that would be something that PBB would be called to, and I assume they would call for help, and that PBB would intervene because that would be a state criminal law violation, and, or, you know, setting fire to a building, that would be something that they would, they would respond to, and would be working with the victim of that crime, just like any other, any other crime victim. On your second question about the permit for the ICE facility, I would love to weight and defer that to our land use attorneys, because it is complicated, but you are right, there is an existing permit, and I think they can better answer, our land use attorneys can best answer, what are the parameters around that, and what are the legal parameters that we have to work within as a city when we're dealing with a permit? Sorry?
No, that is okay. You can't answer all the questions, but you answer many of them all the time, so thank you, Heidi. Are we able to bring a land use attorney down here before the end of this? And I'd love to hear from Chief Day as well, if you have anything else to add, want to make sure you have a chance to speak.
Chief Day?
I'll check into that, Counselor.
Yeah, I'm not a land use attorney, that's for sure. Bob Day, Chief of Police. Couple of things, one, I want to just highlight our directive, and then I'll speak to a couple of things Heidi mentioned. And the blue areas that are in bold there, "No Bureau Member Shall Interrogate, Detain, Arrest, Initiate Investigation, or Take Other Official Police Action Against an Individual Solely on the Basis of Either of These Aspects of Their Identity," and then the other section there that we've highlighted, "The Bureau Will Follow the Direction of a State Statutory Law and City Ordinances by Not Enforcing or Assisting in the Enforcement of Federal Immigration Laws As That Is a Federal Function." So, a lot of that language mimics what has already been covered by Heidi, intentionally so, and we have been messaging consistently over the last several months, the importance of this, and really understanding our lane and our role and responsibility to Portlanders. In regards to a couple of things that have been mentioned, you know, we talk about cooperation or working with our federal partners, there, as to be expected, a lot of different groups associated with this from a law enforcement perspective, so you have the Portland Police Bureau. I would say the vast majority of our conversations are with what's called FPS, the Federal Protective Service. They are not in the, what would be considered the apprehension aspect of the work of Homeland Security or the federal government. Now, they do provide law enforcement services, they provide the security for the ICE facility, they provide security for other federal buildings, but they're, they're not, under the title, they're not ICE agents, they're Federal Protective Service, and that's where we spend a great deal of our time. Our other organizations would be Department of Homeland Security, there's also the Border Patrol, there's also ICE agents themselves. So, you know, I see our role as really understanding and staying specific to state law, state statutes, city ordinances, and directive, and when we do have contact and we do have relationship, I've certainly talked with people in all of those areas over the last month, just to keep lines of communication open, but when it comes to the activity that we are directly involved in, it's strictly centered around criminal behavior as it relates, you know, primarily, as Heidi already mentioned and gave examples, to state statutes that would be applicable anywhere, in that we don't have a role or even been, have not even been asked in, you know, any kind of way to support the immigration enforcement aspect of it.
Counselor Maria?
Thank you, I appreciate those answers. I think I was also curious about the closure of some pathways around the ICE building that have happened recently, I wasn't sure if PBB was in charge of that. It's my understanding that there were walkways that the general public uses, and I was curious if you could answer some of that. I think some of these things, there's just a lot of questions that come from the public when it happens that way, because it can seem like cooperation if that's not the intended impact. Yeah, I'll stop there.
No, I fully understand that community concern, we've tried to be very transparent in that. Several of those pieces of land around the facility have variety of ownership, so for example, we've been working with Oregon Department of Transportation, which has some responsibility down there, and they have been posting and requiring, you know, people to have notification of trespass. Some of it's private property, and then of course, some of it's city of Portland property. I'm not aware of any, any property that City of Portland has closed. We have been regularly enforcing our consistent policy around camping and structures and setups, and we've been using Portland solutions and going through the traditional posting. I'm not aware of a particular, you know, area that we have denied access to, other than regularly, you know, posting areas where there might be camping or something like that. I can definitely check on that, but that's not something that, a direction that I've given at this point. Areas that are closed, is my point, might be related to other agencies, and I'd have to look, look into that.
Gotcha, okay, so it sounds like, yeah, I think there were a few of our staff that were down there, and they did witness the closures themselves. It was a public right-of-way, and I believe someone was charged with trespassing for going on that public right-of-way, so I would be curious to know which agency shut that public right-of-way down, and why that person was arrested for using it. Thank you, if we can follow up on that.
Yeah, so just quickly, maybe offline, a name would be helpful, just so I can, you know, Portland Police has arrested a total of 25 people in the last two weeks related to criminal charges down there. I don't have information specific to any arrests that the feds have made, so, you know, I'd love to look into that for you, maybe like I said offline, we can get a name or a time or something like that, a little more specific, and we can try and run that to ground.
Okay, I will get more information for you, and we'll follow up offline, because I think that would be good for all of us to have some clarity on that. And I know that this isn't your jurisdiction, I'm going to make a general comment, mostly directed at Mayor Wilson, but I think that there, I think that there are valid concerns from the community about some of the mutual aid tents being removed in the vicinity, and I just wanted to state how I actually think it's quite dangerous. I understand the concern about encampments being set up around the ICE building and the potential escalations that could happen there, but the reality is that I saw, you know, footage and video, photos of someone who had their eye shot with a rubber bullet, and it was bleeding down their entire arm, and I don't actually know what happened to their eye or if they're okay. And so, the, everyone who's protested before knows that we need medic tents, and you need medics, and you need people who are there who can help immediately, because if there's not people there to help you, sometimes things can go awry. So I have concerns about us using city resources to clear out medic tents and other mutual aid things that are there to really just keep protesters safe while they engage in their First Amendment rights.
First of all, I'd ask people to keep their commentary quiet, if you could. I have a question about whether we're able to look at what other cities with sanctuary policies are doing, and what issues they're encountering as to what might be viewed as cooperation and what is not, because I would imagine that there are other cities that basically the same, states that have basically the same rule, you don't cooperate with ICE. So are we looking at what's going on in other places so we can identify issues that we might see here and get ahead of them?
Yes, Counselor, so, a week ago, we convened a call with Oregon Association Chiefs of Police, we had about, oh, I think somewhere between 35 to maybe 40, 45 chiefs on that call for about a half an hour, and we talked about, you know, this applies statewide, and talked about different, you know, jurisdictions and responses, and I would say, on that particular call, we were all very much aligned in our role and our understanding about not supporting immigration enforcement. And there's a lot of people paying attention to Portland, and how Portland Police is showing up, and how Portland Police is navigating this, with the understanding that should we see increased enforcement, as we witnessed just recently in Newburgh, you know, the likelihood of there being efforts made in other communities outside of the city, this is statewide concern. So we are problem-solving that and having those discussions and trying to learn from one another, but Portland has the most experience in that, just by the nature of the facility being here. I've also had conversations with chiefs and sheriffs in the city of Los Angeles and other places, trying to, you know, learn, and the information that's coming back to me consistently from other sanctuary city chiefs and sheriffs is, particularly chiefs, not, so I've talked to one sheriff, but particularly chiefs that I speak with, because sheriffs have a little bit different role in communities, is, you know, really a commitment to not being seen as participating in immigration enforcement. And I understand this term, cooperation, that we've touched on a couple of times, and I understand how that can be seen as confusing to both members of the public, as well as even our police officers, and when are we crossing that line? And for me, it's, it really does center around the role that we're trying to accomplish, and if there is immigration component to that, then that's absolutely out of bounds for us. Where it does become more nuanced, and they're struggling with this as example, the example Heidi used in Los Angeles in talking to the chief down there, you know, ICE will show up, they will begin to take enforcement action, they will then be challenged by the community for that action, and then the police are called and respond to step in. And what they're finding is then the federal government will step away and sort of leave the problem or the mess, so they just, I should say, the unsettledness of that community in local law enforcement. And so, one of the things that we're doing a lot of here, from the police standpoint, is we're doing a ton of outreach with our community, trying to really make sure that they know that we understand our lane and that we are working with them, we're informing them, we're providing them with information as we become aware of it, we're providing that with, we're providing that information with our community partners so they know what's happening, and we're, you know, I'm personally taking those phone calls or getting on Zoom meetings with them and trying to make sure that they really can know what we know in terms of that information share. And unfortunately, you know, as much as we pride ourselves in our relationships, our federal partners are not required to share their actions with us even ahead of time, and as I mentioned earlier to Counselor Murillo, for example, I do not know, you know, the names or the people who've been arrested, or what the charges are, the actions that they're taking down there. So there is that gap that we're still trying to close through these lines of communication when available.
Thank you. Counselor Knoll?
Yeah, thank you, Chief Day, for being here, and I appreciate you clarifying the distinction, both of you actually, between communication and collaboration, and it's an important thing. I think that a lot of the topics that we have come through this committee, there's an expectation created in community that isn't necessarily known to us or necessarily accurate to what the document actually says. I'm going to sneeze, sorry. Thanks. I also wanted to take the chance to commend you for the statement that you made in the letter in January about ICE and sanctuary status, and for pointing out a bunch of different things in there. You mentioned sanctuary status helps ensure that communities who might not be as likely to share information with investigators feel safer doing so, knowing that there isn't going to be collaboration on enforcement, and then also on your acknowledgement that there are communities at all that feel less trustful of police, and the comments on the Burn Justice Assistance Grant at the lawsuit filing, because that's part of where the money would get pulled from, that we're suing to prevent that, which, and that money's used for a lot of really important projects, such as body worn cameras, such as some of the crime and violence prevention funding for Office of Violence Prevention Ceasefire Two. So I have three questions, I think, about the broad text, and you may need to get back to me on the first one, I acknowledge that, but there's broad text in Resolution 37277, which says that we shall not coop, the PBB shall not cooperate with ICE, and it's the request specifically to put it's the request specifically to put that into Directive 810.10, which is the actual standard for police conduct that officers are trained on and held accountable to. And my interest is not the accountable in the sense of, like, complaints and professional standards. That's not, but my point is, that's what we're expecting the standard to be held to, right? Is that the directives are generally how police are evaluated.
Can I clarify that point right there? I just want to make sure I'm getting this right. Taking some of the language from 37277 and putting that directly into 810 is what you're referring to.
Well, so what it says is that-
It says cooperate with ICE, and it doesn't say that specific here. That's what I heard, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, in the resolution, it says that council, and this is the 2017 council, directs the PBB to ensure that Directive 810.10 provides that the PBB personnel shall not cooperate with ICE, except as expressly required by federal law. So, I think my question here is that directive's a little bit more granular, right? It lists out specific things in a lot of detail. And you mentioned also that even officers are at times confused. So, would you be able to, either now or later, give back to us with the level of clarity that we could provide, or what council could do to assist in that? Because I think that the gap between those two things creates some expectation that may be unmet in community, even if an officer is complying with the strict directive. Does that make sense?
I understand. And I, I mean, I think, let me repeat back to you what I think I hear you saying, and then, you know, can work on that. So, the language I noticed in 37277 says, you know, not cooperate with ICE. And the directive talks about immigration enforcement. And it says, "To the extent that the mission of DHS has communicated is the enforcement of immigration laws." So, the directive states DHS, it doesn't say specifically ICE. So, DHS referred to Department of Homeland Security, which is the umbrella over numerous agencies that we already talked about. So, you're suggesting that we actually use the term ICE within the directive, just to be more explicit in terms of that organization and its role, et cetera?
Everything but that last sentence, yes. The last sentence, yes, and, I think it doesn't provide a caveat in the resolution for non-enforcement, non-immigration activity that ICE does. So, I believe the resolution, as I read it, says, "We don't collaborate with ICE." Not, "We don't collaborate with ICE when they're doing..."
Oh, I see. Okay. I see where you're going. Yeah.
So, that's the gap that I wanted to mention, that first section. The second question I had, we know that one of the things that we have seen that I think is perhaps the exemplar of the type of criminal activity that you have mentioned, and that PBB will intervene on at ICE, is setting fires at the ICE building. And this is one of the many things, but one of the reasons I think that this comes up more is because fires spread, right? It's not going to be something that exclusively affects protesters or federal agents at that building, but it could affect someone who lives a block away in an apartment building. And so, that makes sense to me, and I want to be clear before I ask this question, that I'm not saying that PBB should not intervene on fires, quite the opposite, if someone's doing that. But we've also seen that some of ICE's activities could affect nearby buildings, such as the use of chemical munitions, which can have serious negative effects on health, including reproductive health, to those who ingest it, or just are, you know, affected by it. And so, given that we know that PBB is getting involved, if a protester starts, tries to start a fire, let's say, are there any situations, even hypothetical ones, in which PBB would be getting involved to prevent ICE doing anything?
Well, there would have to be, you know, behavior that we openly recognize as unlawful, and I'll defer to the city attorney on that. In terms of, you know, we would have to be able to have a legal basis for doing so. So, that would be my standard.
No, that's correct. So, if PBB were observing, or there was evidence that federal law enforcement committed a crime, then, just like anybody, anyone else, they would be subject to arrest based on that crime. But when they are enforcing their law, enforcing their federal civil immigration laws by detainers, you know, the law, the federal law allows them to do that. And even though, even under our sanctuary state law and our sanctuary city policy, both of them reference that, except as required otherwise by federal law, in the state law, and then in our city policy, except as required by federal and state law, because we are required to comply with both of those laws, the state with federal law, and then the city with state and federal law. So, to the extent they're committing a crime, then, yes, PBB could intervene and arrest somebody, based on, just like anybody else commits a crime. But I would note, there are certain things that, for example, in Oregon are not allowed. There's limited circumstances where tear gas is used. As we know, there were a lot of laws that were passed during or after 2020 that really changed, in a good way, the landscape for, in Oregon, and a lot of changes in PBB policy that came. For example, PBB doesn't even, to my knowledge, doesn't even have any rubber bullet distraction devices. So, as Counselor Maria was talking about earlier, somebody, you know, with, got hit in the head, and blood seeping down their face from a rubber bullet, that's not something that PBB uses in a protest scenario, situation at all. And so, I would just know, there's different laws for the federal government than there are under state law and under city policy. Even identification, state law requires police officers to identify themselves as soon as they reasonably can. The federal law doesn't have the same requirements, so we have ICE agents going around and not necessarily identifying themselves. And we don't know necessarily who's taking that action, which puts Portland Police in a very challenging situation.
Yeah. So, I recognize you led off with a comment on the immigration enforcement, Heidi, and I want to talk about that in the context of the identification. That's really important, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with the conversation in LA around requirements around identification, and whether or not people are required to respect the authority of someone who hasn't proven that they are, in fact, law enforcement. But also, my original question was about, in the context of response to protest. And so, in the use of, we've seen, there's videos everywhere of the green gas, right, anywhere on social media, we're aware of at least some of what it is, in terms of chemical breakdown. We know the deleterious effects to health. I'm happy to bring in physicians for social responsibility, or one of those types of groups, to talk about that. And so, I guess, maybe this is not a question for you to answer now, but a question for later, is, to what degree are we able to give the legal authority to prevent the poisoning of our neighbors and our neighborhoods?
And I think, Counselor, it's a great question. You know, whether or not there's a criminal law violation is one question. But whether or not there's, you know, a civil remedy for the, you know, excessive use, potentially, arguably, the excessive use of CS gas, and particularly with the deleterious effects it can have upon people, depending upon the usage, et cetera. And so, that might be something we want to consider, or community members might want to consider, you know, bringing a civil case, requesting some kind of preliminary injunction. I mean, during the 2020 protests, there were temporary restraining orders and preliminary injunctions issued, that people are required to comply with. I don't know how well the Trump administration is complying with our current preliminary injunctions, but we are working on enforcement with those. And so, I think that's one, was certainly an avenue that the city could look at, and individuals could look at as well, who are being impacted by it.
And then, I'd also think that we should talk about with, for our stormwater and sewer aspects of it, that, you know, we're going to end up with water supply that's being affected. And I think that's worth looking into as well. I think it's outside the scope of the conversation. And I hesitate to say outside the scope of your expertise, because every time I ask for an attorney on anything, it's always you, Heidi. But I think maybe a conversation for another time around that. I have more questions. I'm going to pause here.
Counselor, I just want to add, can I add something?
Yeah.
You know, we have been working closely with the district attorney's office and the city attorney's office regularly. So, if there is a law violation, that, you know, the district attorney also can weigh in on that, and, you know, provide legal advice as to what our standing is. I know that I do get asked regularly about, you know, whether or not, you know, the Portland Police are going to step in or interfere with the role of the federal law enforcement. And, you know, as long as, as I said, there's not a criminal nexus, if it's their policies, their procedures, and what they're following, and it's not, there isn't a criminal nexus to it, then we're not going to do that. But if we see the behavior that, you know, is of, you know, leads to probable cause, or that happens, then we would have to take appropriate action. And we would not only rely upon our knowledge and expertise, but also that of the district attorney's office to advise us. And they've been with us on a regular basis in all of these events we've been monitoring.
Yeah, and I recognize that you can't enforce a law that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
So, what I'm suggesting is that it may be worthwhile to pursue making explicit legal prohibitions on the use of gas, not just legal prohibitions on PBB use of gas, as we have done. Because it's not just, obviously, and as, we have the conversation about PBB's stockpiles and use and all that sort of stuff in other contexts. But in this context, that's, I think, where I'm leaning, and I wanted to be clear about that.
And just to add one more thing, that there is a federal criminal law on interfering or hindering ICE immigration enforcement actions. So, PBB has to walk the line of, you know, enforcing our laws, but also not, they are prohibited from interfering with or hindering ICE's immigration efforts. So, just so people understand, too, the limits that, you know, all of us are under and facing potential federal criminal charges would be if we are interfering with or hindering ICE's efforts.
So, that begs a question. Is response to protest part of their immigration work?
Well, no. I mean, I think that response to crimes, and I think that's what the chief's talking about, when, if there is criminal action happening by anyone, then that's what they would be able to come in and take a stance on. And I just wanted to make clear that there are, when ICE is engaging in their civil enforcement action, PBB is limited on the way that they can step in. Now, they would not help enforce it. They won't help them perform that work, either. And, because that's prohibited by state law, it's prohibited by city policy, and prohibited by PBB policy.
Heidi, I just wanted to ask, have you been able to summon a land use attorney to address the permit issue?
My understanding is that my boss here, who I think you all probably call more than I, is here. Thank you so much, Robert.
Thanks for joining us, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The question was the city's authority to revoke or rescind the conditional use permit that was granted. So, in 2011, city council approved a conditional use review for the site. Those conditional, that conditional use review approved the facility subject to certain conditions. Those conditions include that the facility will operate in conformance with an approved safety plan, and that, and an approved ICE custody release plan, that the transportation demand strategies identified in the plan will be implemented, and that no razor wire or barbed wire will be used on the perimeter fence. That was approved by the city council in 2011. Nobody appealed that decision, and it became final. Neither Oregon law nor Portland zoning code allows the city to unilaterally withdraw, rescind, or cancel that prior decision. There is a process under the zoning code to reconsider land use approvals, but it would require that one or more of the conditions that were approved have not been implemented, or those conditions have been violated. It would require that the use be substantially different, or increased substantially from what was approved previously. In the absence of those necessary requirements, the decision cannot be rescinded.
Thank you. Counselor Maria?
I'm going to put my hand down for now. Thank you.
Counselor Canall?
Thank you, and thank you, Robert, for being here. I could probably go down this line of questioning quite a bit. I wanted to first go back to the questions, and I, these are questions that I've gotten, Chief Day, about the response to, and it relates to my last follow-up to Heidi as well, about the response to people who are attempting to, let's say, inhibit or slow down the work that ICE does in the immigration enforcement space. So, their activity is in the protest space, but there, it's effectively a conflict or an attempt to slow or do that. So, and I'm, this is my categorization, but of questions I'm hearing. So, when police are present at the facility on McAdam, what kind of resources are PBB using? I mean, is this the rapid response team? I'm guessing it's overtime. If so, I'm imagining there's supplies being used. Would it be fair to say some sort of cost has occurred by PBB in this scenario?
Yes.
Okay. I want to pretend for a moment that PBB was not present, and ICE was, or it might be FPS, and I appreciate that distinction, was reacting to protesters doing unlawful activity, let's say graffitiing the building. In that scenario, they'd probably have to go out and use some of their resources, time, money, overtime, et cetera, to intervene and possibly detain a protester. I think they've already been doing that, as you mentioned earlier. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, can we reasonably say, therefore, that PBB getting involved in responding to graffiti is taking on a cost that ICE would otherwise be taking on if PBB was not present?
I think there's a valid argument to be made there. And my precision is that our responsibility to all of the population in the South Waterfront is to, you know, serve and also to have a preventative effect on making sure that situations don't escalate. And the criminal activity that's happening down there, I believe Portland Police Bureau members are very well-equipped, and more moderate, and well-trained in their approach for intervening and taking action if need be. So, we have seen, over the course of the last several days, a decrease of interaction by the Portland Police Bureau. Portland Police has not made an arrest in, I believe, the last five days. And, you know, we're continuing to monitor and be available, but we are looking at ways to, you know, decrease our footprint and allow for more of the other efforts being done on the part of FPS. And we have seen an increase in that behavior. Once again, I do not know what the charges are, but the scenario you use, whether it be criminal mischief, or trespass, or others, we have seen them come out and take action. So, it would be my preference that they be able to manage the building themselves and be able to handle that. I also would hope that they would be able to do that in a manner that doesn't escalate the situation. I think that with, you know, Portlanders, once again, the approach that we have taken, and we've demonstrated that with the rest we've made, are, you know, more thoughtful, more well-planned, and lesser use of force than what we're seeing from our federal partners. But ideally, would be to have them provide the security for their building. That would be the preference, yes.
Would it be possible for us to follow up, and for you to let us know what it would take for us to help you get from here to there, to a place where they're providing the primary security on that facility?
Right. And I will say, I'm having those conversations in real time. I had them on Sunday, and I'm pushing all of us to get to that direction, and hopeful that, you know, as a community, as a whole, we'll be able to, you know, do that. And the need for us, or we'll be seeing less on our part. I'm down there, I'm, excuse me, the Police Bureau is down there intentionally, because I feel like we have a role and responsibility to that particular part of the community, as well as the city of Portland as a whole. But I understand also that that's taxing resources, where other parts of the city are suffering. And so, I am constantly- And so I am constantly evaluating that prioritization and looking aggressively even this week for ways to manage those resources. So yes, I'd be happy to share with you and keep you updated about how we get from here to there. That's, that is the goal.
Yeah, and I, I think maybe a, an example might be helpful. There's a, there's a judo studio in St. John's that's had its windows smashed and, and had fecal matter sprayed, you know, spread on the windows several times. And, and this is maybe, it's a different precinct, I understand that. And it's St. John's, which we know gets less service by the city in a lot of ways. And so I think when I get constituent communications about police being willing to respond to ICE's windows, but not necessarily to a window in St. John's, there's a, there's a problem there. And I, I think that is, is not just an optical one, it is an optical one, too. So I, I just wanted to kind of put that into relief through what I'm hearing.
It's absolutely, I mean, that is a very valid point. I don't dismiss that at all. And the efforts, as I said, in South Waterfront, particularly the facility, have been very intentional by the Police Bureau. And they center around the fact that it's a, you know, highly volatile, contentious situation, has the risk, I believe, of causing greater harm to the city as a whole. So I don't see it as just the facility. I see it as my responsibility as the Bureau Director to think about public safety holistically. But I'm very empathetic in understanding that, you know, ideally, it would be if we could dedicate the resources to the coffee shop in St. John's or to the businesses that are often highlighted and suffering. And that's one of the concerns that I have, is because by prioritizing this work, we know that culture service will take longer to get to. We know that investigations will be put on hold. I'm, you know, I'm very transparent about that, and it weighs on me as we try to find this balance. But know that the intention, the attentionality around it is more, is less for me about the facility and more about the holistic approach for the city.
Councillor Maria?
I appreciate councillor Canall's line of questioning, and I guess I just want to bring a little nuance to this discussion as well, because it's my understanding also that, for one thing, I appreciate not wanting to put city funding or resources towards enforcing protests outside of ICE. And I have concerns that frankly, the federal government will act in more unethical ways towards protesters than local police who have some involvement. And I say that as someone who has also been beaten with batons by our local police. So that, that is a nuanced concern that I have. The other concern that I have is that the federal government has made it clear that if local laws don't appear to be enforced, that they will happily send the National Guard or other escalations of the federal government in to repress protests. So I just want to say that to our audience members, that there is a very delicate tightrope that we are walking. And I want to make sure that when we're having these discussions, that we are talking about the very real consequences of every single decision that is being made at this time, and how delicate and strategic we have to approach everything.
I'll, I'll come back to the questions with Robert. You, you gave some information on the permit, and I think there was an assessment, if I recall correctly, it was in 2011, around whether or not there was a safety risk posed by this facility. And obviously, some of this facility's work is completely outside the context of, of all the, the things we're talking about in a protest sense. Its predecessor in Northwest Portland is where my parents went when they first came to, to the United States and to Portland. So I, I'm very familiar with the, the sort of normal, mundane work of appointments and things like that, and want to make sure those are protected, too, for those who are trying to make their appointments. But, but in the context of that safety assessment, at the time, and this is, I'm, I'm reading this in news reporting, so please correct me if that's not 100% accurate, that the, the evaluation led to an assessment that the risk of protests specifically and their effect on surrounding neighborhoods was not enough to warrant reconsideration of the permit at the time. Is that something that assessed? Is that within the scope of something that can be reevaluated at this time?
I think you have accurately described the finding at the time. I don't know that that single finding could be reexamined. I think you would have to look at it through the lens of whether there's been a significant change in the use or an increase in the intensity of the activity. That is a question that we could look into further. This is probably not the appropriate venue to be providing legal advice on that topic.
Fair enough. I, I will ask this rhetorically, and not to you then. I, I think I would love to know the degree to which ICE engaging in activity that leads to community response, that leads to the counter-protesting activity we see there from them, constitutes a change to what was anticipated at the time that permit was granted. And that's not to say that I'm leaning towards whatever. I, I think it's fair to say we should have the authority to do so, and we should be evaluating this from the perspective of, is it a good idea or not? That's, that's where I'm leaning at this moment, but I, I don't know if that's true. So that's the, that's the rhetorical question.
And I don't know that what you're saying is true either. So just to, just to set the expectation for people in the audience that are listening.
Yes.
It's important not to speculate, and I'd be happy to give the advice at the appropriate time.
That's fair. I appreciate that clarification.
Councillor Maria?
Yeah, I appreciate those clarifications as well. Thank you. I think we should get legal advice privately, so I appreciate you, Robert. Since I was the person who brought up questions about the permit, and I think that it seems like we might be ready to close out here fairly soon, I also just wanted to highlight that, since this is, you know, public information at this point, and lots of people have been talking about it, that city councillors, myself included, have been speaking with immigration attorneys about what the impacts are of the closure of the McAdam building on the very people that we're trying to protect. And I am speaking about this from a place of lived experience. I'm a Paraguayan immigrant. My family moved to the United States when I was four years old. It was just me, my mom, my sister. And we moved to the U.S. because we had to, and that's a long story that I'm not going to get into right now. But we came right after 9/11, so it took a long time for us to get our citizenship. People were very wary of immigrants at that time, and so I didn't end up getting my citizenship until I was 17 years old, after moving to the country when I was four. And we've been working with immigration attorneys who have done this work for decades, who have done this work, some for longer than I've been alive. And I think it's really important to highlight their expertise and experience right now, because what they have been telling us is that with the closure of the McAdam building, there have been times where their clients have been taken by ICE, and that they have not been able to find them. Normally, the 12-hour holding window at McAdam is a very critical and pivotal time to protect their clients, because if ICE takes them, you have a very brief amount of time to get to your client, give them the legal advice, and maybe get them out of that space. And right now, that window of time has been lost, because either these immigration attorneys don't know where their clients are, they're being taken to other federal buildings, or they are being taken to the Tacoma Detention Center, which is actually a detention center, and it has been known for, you know, human rights violations. It's not a safe place to be. And once someone is in a detention center, it is much, much harder to get them out. And so as we are making decisions, both legally and procedurally about these permits, we also have to weigh the very difficult and delicate consequences that are happening to people in real time. And I understand the urgency that the community is feeling. I feel it, too, personally for myself as well. I'm afraid for myself and for my neighbors. And I want to ensure that when we are acting, we are acting from a place of strategy and not urgency, because the, we are dealing with a federal government that we have never dealt with before. And this is, every single choice that we make is very delicate and critical. So I just want to name that, this is not a simple question. And we need to do right materially by the people that we were sent here to protect. And as the only immigrant on city council, I do feel a responsibility to immigrants in a different way than maybe everybody else does at this time. So since I asked that question, I just wanted to name those things that we've heard from immigration attorneys and people who've been doing this work for decades. And I know that's not exactly the happy story that everyone wants to hear. Of course, we all want simple and easy solutions to these things, but they are unfortunately very complicated.
Councillor Canall?
Thank you, Chair Novick. Yeah, I think just as we're getting close to the end of this time here, I'll just reiterate, we're going to continue this conversation. For me, I think, I'll just daylight perhaps some of the values that I bring to this conversation. And, you know, protecting the First Amendment is where I'm always going to start. I, I want everyone to know here, you have the right to assemble and to make your voice heard, and I'll do everything in my power to protect your right to do that and to honor the labor that you put in to try and protect your, your neighbors. Ensuring that we're in compliance with our sanctuary city laws and policies, which, you know, I think is about also addressing that perception gap, where sometimes the requirements are actually being complied with, but the requirements and the expectations we've created through resolutions don't necessarily align. And I know that that's something that we have commitment across the, the administration from as well. Ensuring the health and safety of Portlanders, including protection from dangerous chemicals and, and chemical munitions being used by our federal government against our own people in, in our city. Following the lead of those most harmed and those most affected. And I think that's a really important thing that, that councillor Maria said better than I could. But making sure that in our rush to action, we do not fail to listen to those who are the most directly impacted or the most at risk. And finally, and this is also something that, that you mentioned councillor Maria, being strategic and trying to deliver for the people. I think in our roles, there are things that we could do that might be things that are requested, and, and it wouldn't be performative if anyone else did it, but in our roles, it might be. And so I want to be clear that the, the goal here for me is to deliver an actual change of, of policy. And I think the degree to which we can do that is obviously limited by being city officials and not federal ones. But I, I do think that that, those are sort of five ideas that I bring to this. I intend to continue this conversation and just remind everyone, sometimes you don't see us talking about it, it doesn't mean we're not working on it. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We are reaching the end of our time. I just wanted to follow up on the point that if ICE agents are breaking the law, as Heidi said, they are subject to our authority and are not immune from law enforcement. So I think that's important for people to hear. It'll be interesting to see if we see examples in other cities around the country where ICE agents are breaking the law and have been held accountable. Thank you very much to all of our speakers, and thanks very much to the audience, which was largely silent in its commentary. Really appreciate that. Appreciate the jazz hands and the blues hands. I want to acknowledge-
You're just asking the poetic, and you know it.
Can you please, can you please be quiet? We're about to close.
Eighty percent of the people who leave that facility still do not have a lawyer. So this whole, we can't do anything because it's not a perfect solution is-
Can you please be quiet?
I have been quiet enough in my life, sir, I will not.
I want to-
Thank you very much for that. But you guys are talking a lot, a lot of things of how you're just going to go around-
Okay, I'm going to have to ask to have you removed if you don't, if you're quiet.
That's fine, you can have me removed. I'll go.
Okay.
I'm going to stay here and be disruptive, because that is the job, sir.
Okay, can I ask security to ask whoever's speaking to be removed?
There's shooting people in the head and they're worried about the law.
They are, absolutely.
Okay. Are we going to have to, we have to close, are we going to have to clear the room?
They are absolutely hurting protesters at the damn point.
I have seen many try.
That is what they are seeking to do. They have shot me, I have seen them shoot kids, I've seen them shoot people in the eye.
They shot me in the back of the head, I'm dressed.
That's because the freaking community is with us. Revoke the permit or face recall, all of you.
I just wanted to correct something I said earlier on the P S A P recommendations. I was thinking that the fact that Mr. Salazar got a majority of those present meant that he would be sent to the full council with the recommendation. In fact, a majority of the committee is necessary, so Mr. Salazar will be dropped from the ranks of those, of the nominees submitted to the full council, it'll just be Ms. Pochia. And with that, our next committee meeting is on July 8th, and I bring this meeting of the Committee on Public Safety Committee to a close.